Today's, today's session.
Um, Mr. Speaker, yesterday we uh closed the period of interpolation and opened the period of amendment uh for BTA Bill number two six seven. And uh we have also requested uh members of the parliament to submit their proposed amendments so that uh this afternoon we will be able to proceed immediately with uh the amendments. So with that, Mr. Speaker, um uh I move that we open the period of uh amendment. We continue with a period of amendment.
Uh before that, uh you have a list already of these who are the uh moban of the amendments and the and the particular amendments that you have you have already submitted to the floor later.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we are ready to present on screen the matrix of uh the amendments submitted by the members of the parliament.
Okay, good. So thank you very much. So there is a motion now to open the period of amendments? You're the seconded, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
May we request the secretary?
Who are the first uh first uh MP that uh that that will introduce amendments? The the mobans, who are the mobans? So that we can recognize the mobans of the amendment eh in in particular order.
Uh Mr. Speaker, uh they have already submitted their amendment and uh in this order we will have um. Uh Mr. Speaker, we will tackle first the amend- the proposed amendment of MP uh Mastura and then to be followed by the amendment of MP Matalan. They have already submitted their
Amendments.
Amendments.
Uh they have an amendment in absentia, ready around? MP Mastura and MP will, MP Mastura is here around? Are we allowing amendments in absentia?
Okay. Uh Mr. Speaker, there are uh there are other members of the parliament who will stand for and in behalf of MP.
Okay, okay, okay. Oh, s- sino 'yan? Will will that be that will stand for MP, MP Mastura?
Yeah, but if you can restate the motion uh so that you can own the motion.
Yes.
Yeah, so may we recognize um MP Bayintan?
MP Bayintan Ang Batuan is recognized for the amendments.
And can we flash on the screen the matrix? Yeah, this is uh.
Um. MP Atimila, MP Atimila ata 'yan. Um, Mr. Speaker, um, yesterday during the period of interpolation, um, MP Mastura uh quoted or mentioned me uh as uh mentioned the bill that I um um filed as uh reference to the proposed amendment, uh especially on the uh um the merging of those originally um contiguous municipalities, uh Mr. Speaker, uh particularly uh in in Magindanao, uh Mr. Speaker. So um I think uh while while uh he wants to be around, uh hindi naman kami nag-usap, Mr. Speaker, but uh I just don't want to lose the opportunity that we could discuss uh his proposed amendments. After all, uh I was cited yesterday as uh one of uh the uh basis of uh the the bill that I filed was one of the basis of uh the uh proposed amendments. So, uh Mr. Speaker, if you will allow, um this representation would like to stand on behalf of um MP Mastura.
Yes, uh you may continue, MP Bayintan Ang Batuan. You may continue your pro- uh the proposed amendments uh of MP Mastura and your amendments.
Yes, um, Mr. Speaker, um, as shown on the screen, and I think uh this is the same with what I propose. Um for the first district, uh for uh Magindanao uh Del Norte, um the proposed amendment is to uh bring in altogether um Datudin and Talitae being the most contiguous uh areas, uh Mr. Speaker.
There is a proposed amendment uh of uh combining in the district in Magindanao Del Norte, Datudin, Sinswat, and Talitae. Previously, what was amended? What was amended previously Datudin, Sinswat, and sino kasamahan Datudin, Sinswat in the previous? Oh, on the left side. Um port- fourth district, Aketna. So any comments from the government of the day for the amendments?
Mr. Speaker, we do not accept.
Uh the government of the day did not accept the proposed amendment?
Um, Mr. Speaker, uh can we move as one so that when I request for the division of the house later um for Magindanao?
For Magindanao Del Norte alone?
Ye- yes.
So isana lang, no?
Isana lang na po'to, Mr. Speaker.
Oh yes, isana lang, no?
Uh may we hear some comments coming from the proponent, Mr. Speaker? If they will reject all the proposals and I move for the division of the house, Mr. Speaker, for uh Magindanao Del Norte.
Mr. Speaker, all the proposed amendments from the lady in Magindano Del Norte, we do not accept.
All the proposals as uh reflected in the screen for amendments uh is not acceptable. Mas kisang district walang acceptable.
Accepted.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Uh in this case, Mr. Speaker, because um uh I have the same proposal, Mr. Speaker, as contained in Bill number six, um I move that we divi- divide the house, Mr. Speaker.
Uh before the division, BBI a division of the uh decision under division of the house, uh one minute suspension please. So, uh, pa- session resume, pala. The floor leader is recognized.
Can we again flash the the scre- uh the slides? Okay, uh, Mr. Speaker, we are proposing to to so that we will have an orderly uh process. Uh we will tackle first section by section. And then as soon as the amendment appears there, then that will be the time we tackle.
Well, we will tackle the division of the house as proposed, as moved by MP Bayintan Ang Batuan. After the section, sections.
Later, Mr. Speaker. So we proceed first with the um first article?
Yes, yeah, per sections.
Uh we will, we will defer first my motion.
Yes, yeah, yeah. You can later it later your motion.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we start with section one? So the, there is no proposed amendment with respect to that title, Mr. Speaker. Let's move to section two.
Section two.
Again, there is no proposed amendment insofar as section two is concerned.
Section three.
Okay. Uh for the secretariat, can you just uh put there that there is no amendment? No amendment. And then se- then proceed with section three. Section three, there is a proposed amendment uh from MP Haji Abdullah. So uh the the proposal is uh instead of uh requisites, we amend it to criteria.
We accept it, Mr. Speaker.
Is it acceptable to the proponent?
We accept it, Mr. Speaker.
So the amendment as proposed by MP Haji Abdullah is now approved. Approved na. Oh, magsalita ka pa? Akala mo, magsalita ka pa, approve na nga, magsalita ka pa.
Okay.
Oh, uh further, on section three, there is a further amendments by MP Jitlim. Can you, secretariat, can you there is a further amendment from MP Jitlim? Any comment from the proponent or from the sponsor?
Mr. Mr. Speaker, we do not accept the proposed amendments.
Uh this representation submits to the wisdom of the majority on this uh matter, on this section, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
But, di ko na rinig.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, this representation submits uh to the wisdom of the majority on this matter.
So you you agree with not accepti- not acceptance from the the proponent?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh, okay. The most important thing is that that I have uh represented the the people of Tawitawi in wishing for the four district states for the island province of Tawitawi, no? Also, of course, also to Basilan province. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh MP Jitlim. In section four, the the section four eh si- section eh section three, the amendment only the title in the section three, uh the title uh criteria from the question, MP Bayintan is recognized.
Um, MP Kyle, magkaibigan pa rin tayo.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh during the committee deliberation, I propose to um amend the word criteria into requisites. My idea, Mr. Speaker, is once we put the word criteria, we need to enumerate what are the criterias. So in this case, Mr. Speaker, we didn't use any criteria at all. So the moment we put the word criteria here, we are bound to uh define what are the criteria that we are going to use in order to apportion the parliamentary district. But we are not talking about any criteria, and that's why we said that it's requisites. And it was carried by the by the committee, Mr. Speaker.
If if that will be the case, that will be uh recondi- recognition of the approval of the amendments of MP Abdullah and is a request for a further amendments to the amendment.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Malakas ang cutting wording.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
We will return to the uh.
Mr. Speaker, uh based on our careful uh study and consideration, we accept that because uh this uh term criteria is the one uh uh it is in the first proposal, the original proposal. That's why we accept the proposed uh amendment of MP uh Kyle Haji Abdullah.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh we agreed at the committee level, and therefore we need to agree at the plenary level whether we use the word criteria or requisite so that we have a common understanding, Mr. Speaker.
Uh one minute suspension. Session resume. Uh majority of the floor leader.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, um upon consultation with our colleagues, uh the main sponsor uh will stick to the amendment and accept the amendment of MP Haji Abdullah.
So ca- criteria, criteria pa.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So uh next, section four. Approved na, no? Walang problema. Criteria, uh section four.
For section four, this is an amendment coming from. Uh first, for section four, we have a proposed amendment from MP Jitlim. So um the amendment is highlighted in yellow and uh on the screen.
Uh salamualaikum and good afternoon once again, uh Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh MP Jitlim, you are recognized.
My proposed amendment is simply to uh to reflect the actual wordings of the law and uh not more.
Provided in be well.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the?
We do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
The proposed amendment is not accepted.
Well accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah.
We, this representation again submits to the wisdom of the proponent and the majority.
So there is no further discussion in the pro- uh on the proposed amendment since the proponent of the amendment uh is willing to accept the wisdom coming from the government of today. So.
Mr. Speaker, um moving on, uh there is another amendment uh introduced by Deputy Speaker Hatimil Hassan. Uh the amendment uh is to add section five and section six, section seven and section eight. I think uh he has already distributed uh copies of his amendment uh for our consideration, so.
It's it's an additional section
Yes.
to the original bill.
He in- he is introducing uh.
Sections five, section six, section seven up to section nine.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
What's the pleasure of the sponsor?
Not accepted, Mr. Speaker.
It's not accepted. Uh MP Atimila Hassan, you recognize?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move for the division of the house, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to divide the house uh floor leader. Is the motion to divide the house seconded?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Speaker, considering that there is a motion, uh I move that we proceed with the voting.
We proceed with the voting?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to divide the house, uh and we proceed with the voting of the amendments of uh uh deputy speaker.
This is only with respect to the amendment introduced by uh
Uh deputy speaker.
Deputy Speaker Hassan, yes.
This is amendments uh by adding five, section five, six, seven, eight, nine. This is section five, section five, six, uh additional section, additional section to the bill. It is not an amendment to a particular sections of the bill, but it is an additional section. So there is a motion to divide the house, uh and the floor leader request for the division of the house, the uh we proceed with the voting, those who are in favor uh by raising of hands. We will vote by raising of hands. Those who are in favor of the amendment of Deputy Speaker Hatimila Hassan, please raise your right hand. Right hand, not the left hand. Those who are in favor to the amendments of uh Deputy Speaker Hatimila Hassan. The secretariat is directed to count the raising of hand. Bilang na. Tapos na. Tapos na. Patim. Na bilang na yata 'yung buto mo. Those who are not in favor of the proposed amendment of Deputy Speaker Hatimila Hassan, please your right hand. Here are several na. Yeah, big shit there. Abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Abstain. The law ayabstain. Those who abstain, do not raise your, ah, raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Those who abstain, for the voting. Uh para pelaruna 'yung butuhan.
Mr. Speaker, we are now the result of debutsions on the amendments introduced by the honorable Deputy Speaker Hatimila Hassan on additions of section numbers five, six, seven, eight, and nine. For those who favor the amendment, we have three votes. For those who do not favor the amendment, we have thirty votes and we have twelve abstention, Mr. Speaker.
Thirteen yang favor uh do not favor, no? Thirteen?
Thirty, three zero.
Three zero.
Not favor, three zero. For those who favor, three. Abstention, we have twelve.
Twelve. There there being announcement, uh pronouncement, declaration from the secretariat that the the result of the voting is those who are in favor of the amendments of Deputy Speaker Hatimila Hassan is in favor, three. Uh for those who are not in favor, th- thirty, and those who abstain, twelve. So not in favor, has it floor leader? Amendment is lost for that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We will now proceed to consideration of uh the parliamentary districts for the province of Basilan.
Basilan.
Um, there is a proposed amendment from MP Jakilan.
We do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
The proposed amendment of MP Jakilan. The proposed amendment of M.P. Jakilan is not accepted. What is the pleasure of M.P. Muslimin Jakilan? Are going, are you going to pursue your amendments?
Uh thank you Mister Speaker. Um, that is already the decision of the majority for the government of the day. But uh I believe a battery of speakers hold on amendments will still be speaking. And it might be enlivened very soon. So um, there will still be discussions on this matter by other speakers. But uh for the moment um I reserve my rights during the actual voting and the approval of this bill.
So thank you very much. Uh there is no more, there is no more, there is no need for the voting of the amendments, so we can move on. The government of the diversion is uh the the one that favors. So move on uh floor letter.
Uh Mister Speaker, uh we will proceed to the parliamentary districts of uh the province of Lando del Sur. Uh there is a proposed amendment coming from uh the honorable M.P. Abdullah.
Uh, M.P.?
M- M.P. Abdullah.
M.P. Kyle Abdullah.
We do not accept Mister Speaker.
Sana kami mistitohin M.P. Abdullah.
Um, the amendment is um.
This is for Lando Del Sur, no? Uh, Sasikan District.
Okay, uh so uh the proposed amendment is highlighted in uh yellow.
Okay.
From second district up to eighth. Uh this is, we are still on section four, uh sir. This is for the parliamentary district thing.
So, all all the amendments of M.P. Abdullah are not accepted. It's not accepted by the government of the day.
Yes, not accepted.
What is the pleasure of the proponent of the amendments? No need to divide the house. There's no need.
I submit to the wisdom of the house.
Thank you very much to you. We we thank to the wisdom or also of M.P. Kyle Abdullah. Yes, wisdom. Yes. Okay, well move on to the other districts uh.
So Mister Speaker, we are now on uh the parliamentary districts for the province of Magindano del Norte.
Magindano del Norte, as proposed earlier, uh diya may M.P. uh Bayantan ang patuan, can you please reiterate your amendments?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Before I reiterate my motion to divide the house, Mrs. Speaker, I just want to put forward the request uh of M.P. Jam Ramos. Um, she has a proposed amendment actually for section two uh on um the uh declaration of policy um. Just for the record, Mister Speaker, that uh M.P. Ramos submitted the proposed amendment, but it was not included in the matrix, uh Mister Speaker um. Uh we just want to give justice to what have been submitted, uh and that's why I'm bringing out the concern. Uh Mister Speaker, I don't know what is the ruling of the speaker, but I just want to put forward uh the uh proposed amendment of M.P. Jam. Be it uh rejected or not, I just want to put on record that there was a proposed amendment by M.P. Jam.
It was uh not discussed during?
Yes, uh it it was not discussed earlier, but she requested if I can stand on her behalf, uh just for this uh section two, Mister Speaker. Whatever is the decision of the majority, I submit, but uh I would like to request that it would be discussed because it was a product of an effort of the M.P., Mister Speaker.
Um Mister Speaker, um the proposed amendment of M.P. Ramos has not been considered because she has not also participated during the period of interpolation. But if uh the uh the good uh M.P. Bayantan ang patuan will take the cudgel for M.P. Ramos, we will uh consider this in our deliberation.
Uh Mister Speaker, um I would like to request that this will be uh tackled uh on behalf of uh M.P. Jam Ramos. Uh I will stand for this, Mister Speaker.
Okay, so uh with that.
Are we, are we returning to the?
Because uh.
Section two?
Yes, Mister Speaker. That's a request, Mister Speaker, since uh I was already called Mister Speaker, so that I will not go back later on. Uh just to bring this matter, Mister Speaker.
In order to shorten the discussion of this proposed amendment of M.P. Ramos, what is the pleasure of the sponsor o- of the bill? And are you going to accept the proposed amendment of M.P. Ramos?
We do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Yeah, this thing is not uh accepted.
Yes, uh Mister Speaker, and and I will relate to M.P. Ramos, uh whatever is the decision of the majority.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh at least it is in the record that there is a proposed amendment by M.P. Ramos.
Yes.
For record purposes.
Yes.
Fully noted. Thank you very much.
Uh Mister Speaker, may I proceed, Mister Speaker?
Yes.
Um, you know, Mister Speaker, I didn't submit any proposed amendments, kasi after all, may bill ako. And it so happened that 'yung bill ko pareha dito sa proposed amendments ni Mister Spee- uh ni Miss uh ni M.P. Mastura. Ayoko na sanang ma-reject. Kasi nakakapagod ng ma-reject. Inaunahan ko na ayaw. Kaya nga, hindi ako nagsubmit ng ano, kasi alam ko marireject din ako, pero tinailangan kong tumayo dito on behalf of uh M.P. Mastura. So I move that uh we divide the house um on the proposed amendment of M.P. Mastura with regards to the province of Magindano del Norte.
Uh, there is a motion to divide the house uh on the proposed amendment of uh M.P. Isaac Mastura through M.P. Bayantan ang Patuan. Uh, majority floor letter, we we are going to yeah move for the division of the house.
Um, I I already, did you, I did not accept it.
Uh Mister.
Yes, but uh there is a motion already to divide the house.
Okay, so with that, Mister Speaker, I move that we divide the house.
There is a motion to divide the house and the division of the voting should be by raising of hands. Those who are in favor of the amendments of uh M.P. Isaac Mastura, please raise your right hand. Right hand. Pag nagli- naglipton ka, may penalty, minus. Uh okay na. Those who are not in favor of the amendments of M.P. Isaac Mastura, please you raise your right hand. Not in favor of the amendments. Uh, muna. Those who abstain of the proposed amendments, please raise your right hand. Oh. Okay na. The secretariat, can you please declare the final count?
Yes, yes Mister Speaker. The result of uh vo- voting for the amendments introduced by the honorable member of the parliament, Isak Mastura, as follows. For those in favor of the proposed amendment, we have eight votes. For those not in favor of the proposed amendment, we have thirty votes, three zero. And with four abstention, Mister Speaker.
With the pronouncement coming from the secretariat that the final count is those who are not in favor, eight votes. Hey, oh, in favor of amendments is eight votes, not in favor of the amendments is thirty votes and abstention is three.
Four.
Four votes. Yeah, abstention is four votes. So the chair declares that the non-proval of the amendments of uh M.P. Isaac Mastura. Hmm, not not proval.
Okay.
Yes, uh uh floor letter.
So Mister Speaker. Uh Mister Speaker, we are now uh, we will now move to the province of Sulu.
Magindano del Sur.
Ah, I'm sorry.
Magindano del Sur muna.
Ah, okay.
Del Norte.
Uh, yes, uh we are now on the province of Magindano del Sur and uh there is a proposed amendment coming from M.P. Matalam.
Yes, uh Mister Speaker, uh can I make an appeal, Mister Speaker? Uh Mister Speaker, kung mapapansin nyo po 'yung amendments lang po na inihingi namin, is ang basis po ay for the practicality, Mister Speaker. And one of our bases then, Mister Speaker, is 'yung manifestation ng father po ng Magindano uh governor ng Magindano del Sur na napakalayo po nung Dato Abdullah Sankey dun sa third district. Na kung saan, uh nabilon din po 'yung aming mga municipalities that that are close to my heart. Na for practicality, Mister Speaker, uh kung mapapansin nyo po, paki, eri, one lang, kasi 'yun sa first district at saka second district, ang inihingi naman po namin dyan is 'yung Dato Abdullah Sankey is mabilong sa second district. And uh dahil po, ang kadahilanan po niyan, Mister Speaker, ay ang mother municipality po niya ay ang patuan. And doon naman po sa fourth district, ma- ma- Mister Speaker, inihingi po namin na mabilong sa sa third district ang paglat dahil po ang paglat po ay galing po sa mother municipality niya na general escape in that one. That is what we are asking, Mister Speaker, and I hope that the uh proponent would accept our uh our amendment, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
In in in.
Are you going to accept the proposed amendment of uh M.P. Jatlim?
In consideration of practicality, Mister Speaker.
For practicality down.
We do not accept, Mister Speaker.
The proposed amendment is not accepted.
Therefore, Mister Speaker, I will ask to for the division of the house, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to divide the house? Floor letter.
Mister Speaker, I move to uh with that uh request, I I move to the move the, I move to divide the house.
There is a motion to divide the house and it is uh duly accepted. The proposed amendment should be by voting uh through raising of hands. So those who are in favor of the proposed amendment of uh Jambu Michael, M.P. Jambu Michael Matalam, please your right hand.
Nine.
Uh uh those who are not in favor of the proposed amendment of M.P. Jambu Michael Ma- Matalam, please your re- raise your right hand. Not in favor. Iwa ga iwa 'yang kami para makita ng secretariat. Tapos na. Those who abstain uh for their amendment to Pimpay Matalam, please raise your right hand. The secretariat, may I know the result of the voting?
Yes, Mister Speaker, we have now the result of the voting on the proposed amendment of the honorable Jambu Michael Matalam on parliamentary district of Magindano del Sur. Uh for for those in favor of the proposed amendment, we have nine votes. And for those not in favor of the proposed amendment, we have thirty votes, three zero, and with five abstention votes.
With nine in favor of the amendments, thirty uh not in favor of the amendments, five abstentions. The declare, the chair declares that not in favor as the vote.
Uh thank you very much, Mister Chair, and uh with every heart, I will accept, Mister Chair, my defeat, and uh I hope sana tama po 'yung configurations na ginawa nila.
Every heart? What kind of P V is that? Okay, uh floor letter.
Mister Speaker, we will now move to uh the province of Sulu. Our deputy speaker uh Attorney Tan has uh proposed amendments for the fifth and uh sixth district.
Deputy Speaker na bilan is recognized for the amendments on the configuration of district in the province of Sulu.
So the proposed amendment covers fifth, sixth, and seventh.
Sixth and seventh district in the province of Sulu. They are recognized here. They are recognized. Thank you, Mister.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, my friend, my boss. Thank you, floor leader, for giving me this opportunity. Before we proceed to the acceptance or non-acceptance, may I just be allowed a few minutes? Ah, last ditch. The affected eight districts are the fifth, sixth, and seventh Parliamentary District of the province of Sulu. The affected municipalities are Tongkil from fifth to sixth transfer and Tapul from seventh to fifth. This is to show that all the population requirement and contiguity are met. That is the reason. As discussed in the deal, since this is this ah provision of law is a legal requirement, it must first be understood in its legal sense. According to Black's Law Dictionary, contiguous is defined as enclosed proximity, near, and though not in contact, neighboring, adjoining, whereas adjacent is defined as lying near or close to, sometimes contiguous neighboring. Using this, it is clear that no legal justification to close cluster Tongkil with Kalinggalan, Kaluang, Pata, and Estino. The ocular specs- inspection of Sulu's geography will indicate none of the municipalities mentioned neighbors or adjoints Tongkil. Using the definition above, Tongkil must be clustered with the neighboring and adjoining municipalities of Omar and Luok. It is only then that we are able to faithfully comply with the requirements of the law. It was admitted that the requirement contiguity does not apply to island municipalities in parliamentary districting. To this, you, this representation respectfully disagree. With all due respect to my colleagues, such position is not supported by the laws nor by Philippine jurisprudence. To sanction this position, we allow the parliament or arbitrarily group islands with other distant islands without any limitation. Such will further perpetuate the heavily disfavored legal principle of gerrymandering. The cited Republic Act versus Provincial Government of Palawan does not refer to contiguity. Its requirement shall apply if the local government unit is comprised of island. The incomplete citation above seems to be misleading the plenary. The issue contingency was mentioned to determine the jurisdiction, territorial jurisdiction of Palawan in relation to its entitlement to unequitable share in the utilization and development of natural wealth. Further, the requirement of contiguity mentioned pertains to the local government code requirement in determining the respective area of the LGUs. In fact, the complete citation of the paragraph would show that contiguity here is completely different from districting, whether congressional or parliamentary district to it. This is clear from the laws and regulations binding local, respective requirement contiguity shall not apply if the local government unit is comprised of island. All that is required is properly identified by means and balance. Clearly, that case did not pertain to districting but merely determined the respective area of Palawan. So, with that, I submit, I submit, ah, Mr. Speaker, to my proposed configuration. Ah, pero, pero pwedeng for the last time ipakita 'yung map. 'Yung pip, 'yung showing, ah, 'yung configuration ng pip na as, as I propose now. Fifth, sixth, and seventh. Pwede ipa-plus? Secretariat? 'Yung sinadmit ko kaninang tanghali. Hindi, Tawi-tawi 'yan, Sulu ako. Waka mo naikita eh. Eto 'yung proposed ko, matagal pa eh. Hindi, hindi na map, 'yung ano lang, 'yung cluster, 'yung configuration ng municipalities. Fifth district, as I propose, Pata, Tapul, Kalinggalan ko lang, Kaluang, and Estino. Hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred thirty-three population. Sixth district, Old Panama, Luok, Omar, Tongkil, hundred fifty-one thousand, four hundred eight. Seventh district, Lugos, Yasi, Pandami, hundred forty-three thousand, nine hundred nine. Those are the three districts affected in my proposal so that it still all meet the qualification of population and contiguity. Thank you, Madam Sp- ah, floor leader, Mr. Speaker.
Majority floor leader, any comment from the sponsor?
We do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
The proposed amendment is not accepted.
I move to divide the House, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to divide the House? Floor leader.
Um, Mr. Speaker, considering the motion to divide the House, I so moved to the, to put the amendment to voting, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, there is a motion to divide the House and the amendment, proposed amendment is to voting. Those, those who are in favor of the proposed amendment of Deputy Speaker Nabil Tan, please raise your right hand. You know, ah, those who are not in favor of the proposed amendment of Deputy Speaker Nabil Tan, please you, raise your right hand. Not in favor of the proposed amendment. Those who abstain, 'yung one napang poso to the proposed amendment of Pa- Deputy Speaker Nabil Tan, please raise your right hand. Panop- Okay na? Secretariat, are you through with the counting?
Mr. Speaker, the result of deputations on the amendments introduced by the Honorable Deputy Speaker Nabil Tan on the ah district six and district seven of the province of Sulu are as follows. In favor of the proposed amendment, fifteen, one five. Not in favor of the proposed amendment, twenty-nine, two-nine with one abstention vote, Mr. Speaker.
There is, as pronounced by the Secretariat, the final voting is those who are in favor of the proposed amendment of Deputy Speaker Nabil Tan, one five, fifteen, those who are, ah, those who are in, those who are not in favor, twenty-nine, and those who abstain, one. So, the not in favor of the amendment, as it. The bo- the voting is fifteen, twenty-nine, one. Those who are in favor of the amendments is fifteen. Those who are not in favor of the amendment is twenty-nine and those who abstain from the voting is one. So, you have to tank the fifteen.
So, ah, with that, Mr. Speaker, ah, we will now move to the final ah ah districting in ah the province of Tawi-Tawi. Ah, the Honorable MP Attorney Jat Lim ah has submitted his ah proposed amendments.
MP Jat Lim is recognized.
Bismillah, Herakman Rahim. Ah, the rationale for my proposal has been explained yesterday, so I now await the
The pleasure of the
on the proposal of this representation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Because ah, yesterday in the PNI Department, my deliberation, it was already discussed. So, what is the pleasure of the sponsor?
Not accepted.
The proposed amendment of MP Jan Anthony Lim is not accepted.
In that case, Mr. Speaker, ah, I move to divide the House.
There is a motion to divide the House? Ah, floor leader.
Ah, for the information of everyone, there are actually three districts. The first district, ah, it's ah acceptable to us, but the second and third district ah are weird.
So, the amendments is in the
Second and third district.
The parliamentary, parliamentary district in Sigan parliamentary district and the third parliamentary district in the province of Tawi-Tawi.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you very much. Floor leader. Floor leader, there is a mo- motion to divide the House? Ah, floor, we, we, we'll call for the voting of the province of Tawi-Tawi as proposed by MP Jit Lim.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, considering ah the motion to divide the House, I move to ah put the a proposed amendment of MP Attorney Jat Lim to voting.
So, there is a proposed, ah, the, there is a voting on the proposed amendment of ah MP Jan Anthony Lim. Those who are in favor to the proposed ah amendment, please re- raise your right hand.
Jit Lim.
Ano ba, ano bang pinaka-ini-Jit Lim sa proposed? The, this is the proposed amendment of Jit Lim, baka mali ang dinig niya, ah. Kaya ko maniwala eh, kasi hindi pa niyo kinakausap. Hindi ko, hindi pa ko magpukpuk. Those who are not in favor of the proposed amendment of MP Jit Lim. Those who abstain.
I am the, I am the proponent here, so I am compelled to vote.
Why there is
Hirap na magbilangin 'yung isa.
Why, why is there a turn of the page?
Mr. Speaker, we have now the result of deputations on the amendment introduced by the Honorable Member of the Parliament Jit Lim on the second and third parliamentary district of Tawi-Tawi province as follows. In favor of the proposed amendment, forty-two, four-two. Not in favor of the proposed amendment, zero vote. Abstention, two votes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, ah.
Yes, with the pronouncement coming from the Secretariat, the final tally is forty-two in favor of the proposed amendments. No, not in favor, both, eh, what? One see, by, by Lim. In favor, and abstention is there is two abstis- abstention. By, by We got declaration, the proposed amendment, as it.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, just for the record, ah, MP Bai Ling, ah, abstained because it is sponsored.
Ay, abstain ka na, hindi ka na
In, in behalf of the province of Tawi-Tawi, I thank ah the Speaker and the fellow members of the parliament. You have the eternal gratitude of the island province of Tawi-Tawi, especially the Salma people. Thank you. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumussalam warakmatullahi wabarakatuh. May magpakandurian sa lounge. Yan. Magkandurian na. With the Hassan, ah, we declare a fifteen-minute recess.
Those who abstain of the Seimas amendment.
Any amendments?
There is a proposed amendment from Deputy Speaker Omar Seman.
But it's not around. Is he going to be represented by Senator Seman?
Okay, so this is also the amendment, the proposed amendment of MP Romeo Seman.
Romeo Seman. MP Romeo Seman is recognized for the proposed amendment in the Parliamentary District of Cotabato City.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think it depends on the decisions of the senator. Accepted or not to?
Not accepted, Mr. Speaker.
The proposed amendment from Deputy Speaker Omar Yaser Seman and MP Romeo Seman is not accepted from the sponsor. But it's the pleasure of the mobant of the amendment. Yes, I hope to divide the house, Mr. Speaker. There is a motion to divide the house for senator.
Mr. Speaker, I saw move to divide the house.
There is a motion to divide the house, you're listening candid.
Mr. Speaker, before that may we request the page to invite all the other MPs who are still at the lounge.
The Sherjin Tatarms and the pages. Please remind those who are in the lounge to go inside for the voting of the Parliamentary Districts of Cotabato City. Those will start now the voting. Those who are in favor of the amendments of MP Romeo Seman and Deputy Speaker Omar Yaser Seman, please raise your right hand. The so-called Seman amendments. Seimas, Seimas amendment.
It, isa lang naman bar yo no, 'yung tamotaka no?
Those who are in favor of the Seimas amendment, please raise your right hand. Those who abstain of the Seimas amendment. Abstain. Secretaryat, can you please announce the final countdown? Hey, the final countdown.
Mr. Speaker, the result of the voting on the proposed amendment of the Honorable Member of the Parliament DS Omar Seman and Honorable Member of the Parliament Romeo Seman on the Parliamentary District of Cotabato City, Araspalos. In favor of the proposed amendment fifteen, one five. Not in favor of the proposed amendment twenty five, two five, with two abstention votes, Mr. Speaker.
When the declaration come in, the secretaryat. Those who are in favor of the votes for Seimas amendment or in favor fifteen, not in favor twenty five and abstain two, two. The not favor has it.
Mr. Speaker, we will now proceed to the Special Geographic Areas Parliamentary District. We have a proposed amendment from MP Dr Hashimi Dilanggalen.
Amendment, MP Hashimi Dilanggalen is recognized for the amendment of the Lon District in the Special Geographic Areas, SGA.
Not accepted, Mr. Speaker. Not accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Yay. The proposed amendment of MP Dilagalan is not accepted. What's your?
Uh, sasamaan ko 'yung kaibigan ko na si MP Kyle Haji Abdullah, I will yield to the pleasure of the majority, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Uh, there is no more voting. The sponsor of the proposed amendment here today uh version of the government of the day. So there is no more voting for that uh amendments. So, Pluriter.
Mr. Speaker, there being no further amendment, I move to close the period of amendment.
There is a motion to close the period of amendment, Julius candidate, no objection, this is my approval.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the voting of co- Parliament Bill number two six seven on second reading by Viva Vote.
There is a motion to vote the bill number sixty seven, two six seven on second reading by Viva Vote, same voting, there being no objection, this is my approval. Those who are in favor of bill number two six seven as amended, please say aye. Those who are not in favor, please say nay. The ayes attend, the ayes as it. BT bill number two six seven is now approved on second reading. Uh, Pluriter is, is the bill two six seven is certified as sergeant bill.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, we have with us the letter of the Chief Minister dated February twenty one twenty twenty four addressed to our honorable Speaker Attorney Pangalian Balindong certifying that the act providing for the creation of parliamentary districts in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimidanao is a, is uh an urgent bill, Mr. Speaker. May we request the Secretary General to confirm this communication.
Is the Secretary General, is the uh certification communicated to the office of the Secretary General?
Mr. Speaker, on February twenty two twenty twenty four at two P M, the Office of the Secretary General officially received the said communications, the chief minister certifications of urgency of the uh bill number two six seven entitled an act providing for the creations of parliamentary districts in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimidanao. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Since uh there is a certification coming from the Chief Minister addressed to the Speaker on bill number two six seven and the three days period is waived as pursuant to the rules of the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law. We can now proceed uh Pluriter for the third and final reading of bill number two six seven. Yes, uh, what's the pleasure? Yes, uh.
Uh, the, we have just finished the second reading and since there's a certification as urgent, therefore we can proceed anytime today. However, I'd like to know if there is a clean copy and in ro- of uh the bill already prepared. If there is, we can, we can uh move for a recess of few minutes.
Yes, uh, I said for few minutes for the clean copy to be furnished to all members of the parliament.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, may I request for a five minute suspension?
Yeah, five minutes uh suspension.
Ah. The real, the genuine Lord Leader is recognized.
Bismillahirohmanirohim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh to the honorable speaker, presiding uh speaker, deputy speakers, members of the parliament. We have already uh distributed the final copy of the bill. It is about to be distributed um Mister Speaker. Uh but on uh account of expediency and uh time Mister Speaker I now would like to move that we vote on third and final reading by nominal voting.
Shion to vote on third and final reading on BTA Bill number two six seven by nominal voting. No objection or dissimis said by approve. The Secretariat is directed for the roll call in the nominal voting of the members of the parliament. Uh the Secretariat, you can proceed now.
Nominal voting on BTA Parliament Bill number two six seven entitled An Act Providing for the Creation of the Parliamentary Districts in the Bangsa-Muro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanau, author the government of the day. Honorable Members of the Parliament Abbas Akmad, Abbas Harun, Abbas Basit, Abu.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillahi rabbil alamin. Washed wa laa inaa hi lallahu. Wa thuhu laa sarika ala. Washed wa naa Muhammadan abduhum wa rasul. Allahumma shalih wasalim ala sayyidina Muhammad. Hatimil MBI wad musali. Walaa alihi washabi atmain. Ah salamualaikum warahmatullahi barakatuh anhu. This sound good afternoon.
Mister Speaker. As one of the humble combatants of the Bangsa-Muro Struggle, representing the Northeast Terminal Front of the Bangsa-Muro Islamic Armed Forces of the Mor Islamic Liberation Front, peace in Lando del Sur, today is history. History witnesses that the Bangsa-Muro Struggle is one of the longest revolutions in history. Our ancestors challenged the might of the Spanish colonial masters for more than three hundred years. Then the Americans came and our forefathers put against the might of the American imperialist. The Spanish Imperial Army came again and our forefathers put against them for more than five years. In our lifetime, we fought for almost fifty years to regain the lost, to regain our lost freedom. In behalf of the Northeast Terminal Front which I am representing, peace in Lando del Sur. Mister Speaker, I vote yes. To die for the sake of the oppression is lighter, is lighter than the feather. But to die for the sake of the fresh is heavier than any mountains and deeper than in oceans. Thank you, Mister.
Abu Mujib. Alamiyah Laisa. Allaudin Musbir. Ali Ibrahim. Ali Lanang Junior. Ali Idi. Ambolutu Suhalto. Aminudin Abdulaziz. Ampat Tuan Pak Intan. Anayatin Susana. Antau Muhammad Kili. Arnado Mirian. Asnawidan. Babau Ali Muntaha. Balindong Pangalian. Kandau Bai Malihah. Dilanggasi, Dilangalin Hasimi.
Um Mister Speaker, can, can I have one minute?
Yes.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh Mister Speaker and all of the distinguished members of the part Bangsa-Muro Parliament, I am honored to have introduced amendments to BTA Bill two six seven with a central focus on enhancing representation within the special geographic areas. Our earnest desire is to own, is to not only enhance political representation in the SGA but also to improve geographical cohesion among the scattered areas by inclusively embracing the municipalities of Northern Kabuntalan, Datu Montawal and Pagalungan as well as proposing two districts within the SGA framework. The proposition stemmed from our unwavering commitment to strengthen democratic principles and ensure that every constituents' voice resonate within the parliament framework. In recognizing the wisdom inherent in this august body and the government of the day, I want to express my deep understanding and wholehearted respect for the considerations at hand. Although my proposition has not been accepted, I am fully cognizant of the intricate decision-making process and appreciate our collective efforts to steer our region towards prosperity and progress. Rest assured that the decision this plenary makes has not only my unwavering but also my wholehearted support. I believe that through collaborative efforts and thoughtful decisions, we will strengthen the democratic foundation of our government and elevate the representation of all our constituents and for the Bangsa-Muro people, my vote is yes. Sukran. Wassalamualaikum.
Domama Sa Albasa, Domama Albasa Ilaha. Ibrahim Ahud. Ismail Suhalto. Istino Matarul. Gayak Abdullah. Gera Edward. Haji Abdullah Khalid. Abstention.
Nilang pala. Kalau kau kabarin explanation mo.
Hasim Abdullah. Hasan Hatimil.
Can I have one word or two words?
Yes, uh you're more than recognized.
Uh thank you, Mister Speaker. My uh vote, I abstain, Mister Speaker, from voting of this uh bill.
Mister Speaker. Yes, yes. Uh thank you, Mister Speaker. I abstained from voting of this uh bill. Mister Speaker, I propose amendments which was rejected by my colleague in the parliament. I accept that the rejection of my proposed amendments on the spirit of democracy. Mister Speaker, the reason why I abstain because I intend to file amendatory bill or supplementary bill either in this parliament or in the future parliament. Kung dan cecian pako. Thank you, Mister Speaker. My vote is abstained. Thank you. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullah wabarakatuh.
Hikbal Mohager. Ismail Rasul. Jaduri Raisa. Jakilan Muslimin. Jekiri Albakil. Kahalandin Martin. Karun Faisal. Limjan Anthony.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Yes, uh you are more recognized.
Our speaker, honorable Pangalian Bagal Balindong and our deputy speakers, especially the deputy speaker Minister Pysarintago is uh sitting at the helm of uh today's plenary. Uh ladies and gentlemen, fellow members of parliament. Good afternoon. In casting my vote in favor of the parliamentary districting bill today, I am filled with a profound sense of accomplishment and gratitude. Our journey to this moment has been one of persistence and resilience reflected in the discussions surrounding the reconfiguration of districting of Tawi-Tawi among others. Though our initial proposal for the four parliamentary district seats was not accepted, our second position on the reconfiguration of districting for Tawi-Tawi has been embraced, marking a victory for the principle of equitable representation within our legislative framework. I therefore extend my deepest thanks to all members of this august chamber and to every supporter of our proposal. Your willingness to engage, deliberate and ultimately accept our revision proposal is a testament to our collective dedication to the democratic ideals which we all cherish. This decision is a step forward in ensuring that the representation in our parliament truly mirrors the diverse and vibrant communities or peoples of Tawi-Tawi, most particularly highlighting the importance of including the Sama majority people whose voices are critical to our shared narrative. To the people of the province of Tawi-Tawi, especially the Sama people, today is a clear indication of our commitment to ensuring that your perspectives, needs and aspirations are integral to the governance of our region. This reaffirms our promise to advocate for inclusivity and to work tirelessly towards a future where every segment of our society is fairly represented. I am grate- grateful for the opportunity to play a role in this process. The acceptance of our second position on districting is a reaffirmation of our unwavering resolve to build a more inclusive, equitable and representative region. As we move forward, let us carry the spirit of this achievement with us continuing to strive for a governance structure that reflects the diversity of our region and upholds the dignity and rights of every individual. Thank you, fellow members of the parliament. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Sukran.
Luong Benjamin. Luong Don Mustapa. Lurina Husi. Makaku Ajamil. Makapar Abdullah. Makasalong Marjani. Makatanung Amrosi. Maglangit Tarhata. Malik Hamid. Mantawil Bailing. Mastura Ishak. Matalamja Parapulo Mikail.
Uh Mister Speaker, can I have my few seconds?
You can explain your vote.
Uh before I vote, Mister Speaker, I would like to commend the proponent for to congratulate them for uh to sa bill na ito na mapapasam, Mister Speaker. Although with a heavy heart, Mister Speaker, uh for me at sa amin sa nanakalagay sa third district ng Magindanaw Del Sur, we feel that the configuration is very impractical and for that I vote no, Mister Speaker.
Mawalil Amil Bahar. Mindosa Proilin.
Mister Speaker, mga kapwa po miyembro ng parlementong ito, magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Ako ay isa lamang sa mga tinig ng ating mga maliliit napamayanang katutubo sa Bangsa Moro. At naiintindihan ko naman ang paliwanag ng Committee on Rules, kung bakit ang South UPI ay nasa first district ng Magindanaw Del Sur, batay sa apportionment ng panukalang redistricting. Pero lagi nating binabanggit, Mister Speaker, na dapat kompak, kontigus, continuous, at adjacent. Ang aking pakiusap noong mga ilang araw during period ng interpolation, Mister Speaker, ay sana na isama siya sa fourth district ng Magindanaw Del Norte. Dahil 'yung kinabibilangan niyang talayan, datu hofer, datu anggalmin timbang, kung proximity, kontigus, at adjacency, at continuity ay malayong malayo talaga. Katulad ng aking posisyon dati pa man, ang South UPI, Mister Speaker, at UPI, at kahit na ngayon, ang datu Blasinsuwat ay one undivided UPI dati pa man. Dahil magkakalapit nga at magkakadikit ang mga bayang ito, bago ito naging South UPI at Datu Blasinsuwat Municipality. Hinugot sila, Mister Speaker, sa mother municipality na UPI. Ang South UPI, Mister Speaker, ay konektado in terms of transportation papuntang UPI at Datu Blasinsuwat. Katunayan, dahil malapit ang mga barangay ng North UPI sa South UPI, madala sa South UPI dinadala ang mga pasyente dahil nga magkadikit at magkalapit talaga. Pag-isama mo ang South UPI sa talayan, datu anggalmin timbang, at datu hofer, ito 'yung sinasabi nating geographical isolation. Kaya nga't hinahanap ko pa rin 'yung sinasabi nating kompak, adjacent, continuous, at continuity. At dahil dito, Mister Speaker, dahil nga ako lang 'yung nag-iisang tinig ng ating mga maliliit na mamamayang katutubo sa parlementong ito. At para sa pagkakaisa at common good ng parlementong ito, ako po ay buboto ng yes.
Meet Timbang Michael.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahi wabihin astain wabat. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Napakinggan ko po ang uh tinig ng ating uh kawabayan at kasamaan dito sa member of the parliament. Sa kanyang po hinahing, na bakit po nasama ang South UPI sa district po, first district ng uh Magindanaw Del Sur. Hindi po dapat sisihin kung paano nasama ang South UPI sa aming mga munisipyo. Dahil ang South UPI ay nabibira po sa probinsya ng Magindanaw Del Sur. Hindi po pwede isama ang South UPI sa bayan ng South UPI, uh North UPI. Dahil ibang probinsya po, anga, anga Maginda, anga Magindanaw Del Sur, ay ang South UPI ay ditupon na bilang sa Magindanaw Del Sur. So, sat palagaiko, ay hindi naman tama, anga South UPI ay iragay natin sa Magindanaw Del Norte, dahil ander po siya ng Magindanaw Del Sur. So, ang dapat sisihin dyan, noong uh pagdivide, pagdivisyon ng probinsya, paghate ng Magindanaw ay dapat doon kayo na ginahin kayo sa doon sa kongres, na ginahinin yo, na anga, pro, anga South UPI ay hindi po pwede ipilang dito sa Magindanaw Del Sur. No kaya nga napabilang 'yung South UPI dahil kontigus ang talayan, datu anggal, ginulungan, acakadatuhoper. So yanang kadahiranan, na anga South UPI ay nabilang sa aming mga distrito. Madam uh Proilin Mindosa. Mister Speaker. Thank you, Mister Speaker. At least talamanin yo kung ga- paano ang dahilan, ang nasama ang South UPI dito sa aming distrito, Mister Speaker. So Mister Speaker, the creation of parliamentary districts in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Musliminanau is a crucial step towards ensuring fair representation and effective governance uh for the people of the region. The enactment of this bill is a testament to the support and the commitment of the Bangsa Moro Parliament to deliver to His Excellency President Bongbong Marcos, matters which are beneficial to the continued development at the reg- of the region and the nation. This is likewise in line with the requirement of the constitution and law, more particularly in the enactment in supported by the Quran and Hadith. In the present, there is evidently need for fair representation and just governance, which can be achieved through the creation of parliamentary districts in the BARM by ensuring that each district has its own representation in the parliament. The voices and concerns of the people in each area can be effectively heard and addressed. Additionally, Mister Speaker, the creation of parliamentary districts in the BARM aligns with the prin- principles of the consultation and consensus building, which is essential and moral governance. The creation of parliamentary districts allow for a greater consultation and participation in the governance of the region. Therefore, I vote yes to the approval of of the bill number two six seven. It is imperative for the parliament to approve the bill in order to uphold the principles of Islamic governance and support the development and prosperity of the BARM. Thank you and Wassalamualaikum.
Tawakal Meet Timbang. Miswari Abdul Karim. Miswari Norrida. Mitmu Grasol Junior. Munyo Susain. Uranun Swaeed. Pakasim Ubaidah. Pak Abdul Wahab. Pangendaman Nabila Margarita. Parkasi Urandul. Piang Ramon Senior. Ramus Diamila. Salindap Said. Salik Ali. Sangki Ali. Sima Umar Yasir. Sima Rumyu.
Speaker, uh one minute? One minute? Okay. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam warahmatullahi salam.
The making of this act is truly a challenging undertaking for the parliament, for this parliament. For that, my commendation to the proponent and the technical working group who prepared this deal and as well as to my fellow parliament who shed light into the realities and practicality of the propos- proposal. I recognize that many of us, that many of us have sentiments that we are not considered, but I hope that this will not make us think that we are favorless. Even that only have thirty-two seats, two apportions, we are very limited. Thus, we all have to meet halfway and we have to make compromises. We are dividing as more pie and so it follows that each province will also get as more share than they need. However, I hope that this will not make us granted. Our way forward is to porto, to propose for more district, for more district seats in order to meet, to cater to more representations in the parliament. For now, we could only compromise in the most equitable terms as possible. We hopes that districting would not disprecise our constituency. Mister Speaker, my vote is yes with reservation. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Sik Said. Silongan Aida. Sinulinding Kadel Junior.
Mister Speaker, may I have my one minute?
One minute lang.
And more. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Our Chief Minister, Speaker, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leader, Deputy Floor Leaders, esteemed members of the parliament, Wassalamualaikum. Pleasant afternoon. As a representative of constituents of the special geographic area, we wished, recommended, and submitted to have more representatives in the parliament, being in a sense orphaned from municipal, provincial, and congressional representation. However, we also know how to submit our desire to the wisdom of the leadership that we believe shall be beneficial to all of us. With that, I give my vote, Insha Allah, along with our people, an affirmative one. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Sulaiman Ali. Taan Nabil.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam warahmatullahi ta'ala.
May I have uh two to three minutes?
You can make it five.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Today, we're about to approve uh BTA Bill two six seven, which defines the parliamentary districting in the entire BARM region. We have uh gone too far in terms of deliberation. I thank the sponsors for acceding to some of my, many of my personal requests, uh especially making Holoh a single district and the rest, and the arrangement of the geographic units in the entire uh first district except in the second district. We, the, the stand of this representation in relation to one municipality has, I think uh, pushed us to the limit of the legal uh leeways. We, this representation have always maintained that we should always adhere to the framework of the law, which is population and contiguity. I think this has been the problem in some of the proposals also in the other provinces. But uh to focus, I think we have violated this uh on, in terms of the, the prophecy of my proposed amendments to conform to the requirements, this was not followed. So, I'd like to repeat that the mandate to create or determine parliamentary district is not without limitations. The laws already constrain this power with a limitation that district must comply with the population and contiguity requirements. To insist a configuration that dares to go against statutory requirements poses controversy that can be a subject of judicial scrutiny. With this, I vote uh yes with a very strong reservation on the uh, on the things that I have shared with you during the deliberation. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Osman Aspar. Otu Basir. Oyo Yod Cityfani. Yakub Muhammad. Ampatuan Baintan.
Mister Speaker, may I have my one minute?
Yes, you are recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. At the outset, I would like to congratulate the government of the day for successfully facilitating the passage of bill number two six seven. At first, I thought that it would be very difficult, tough process for the committee and in the plenary, but with the good leadership of the floor leader and other members of the Committee on Rules, the process went very smoothly. Um, it is not, um, we all know that um I uh filed the bill, BTA Bill number six, and aside from that, I even offered one formula uh for the redistrict, redistricting, which will uh, uh which considers the existing uh congressional districts and giving, or putting premium to the existing cities uh in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. Having said that, um I know and I respect that the government of the day, of the day has its position and during the course of the deliberation in the committee, I actually first the one who um manifested that um while it is true that during the public consultations, that, um, while it is true that during the public consultations, every consultations that we have undergone, there was a sounding request for additional seat, and that was given, no? And the committee in Pak considered it through passage of a resolution later on, uh, requesting the Congress through the, uh, Intergovernmental Relations Board to consider, uh, adding, uh, seats for the parliamentary districts. And, um, I think that is, um, um, win-win solution uh, for the committee and for the Parliament. However, um, I have a strong position that, uh, the mother and the child municipality should not be separated or divided. And, um, I found out that with a heavy heart also, that in the case of province of Magindanaw, um, some of the areas that we want to be grouped as one family because they belong to one mother, uh, was, uh, were separated. And, uh, with that, uh, Mister Speaker, I, uh, my vote will be abstention. Thank you.
Basman Ana Tarhata. Jikiri Albakil. Kahalandin Martin.
Was the result of the voting. Yes, Secretary, Secretary General, can you please announce the result of the final vote?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah wabihinas ta'in. Mister Speaker, we have now the result of the nominal voting on the third and final reading of the BTA Parliament Bill number two six seven entitled an act providing for the creations of the parliamentary districts in the Bangsa Muro Autonomous Region in Muslimin Danawas follows. Uh, forty-seven yet yes votes, one no vote, and three abstention vote, Mister Speaker.
With, with the voting of forty-seven yes vote, one negative vote, and three abstention vote, BTA Bill, Parle- Parliament Bill number two six seven is now approved on third and final reading. Picture taking, important thing. Uh, floor leader, what's your pressure?
Mister Speaker, one minute suspension.
One minute suspension. Uh, session is now resumed. Mister Speaker. Uh, the speaker will be dealing is for the ceremonial signing of the approved bill on the districting. Uh, in view of that, uh, we will, uh, suspend for the ceremonial signing of the bill. Billa wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Chief Minister, Abdul Balawa Ibrahim, the Honorable Members of Parliament, esteemed guests, fellow Bangsa Muroh. Chief Minister, first of all I would like to say that we are glad that we have just approved one of the priority bills concerning the parliamentary districting. But I could see from the eyes of the members of the parliament that we are more than happy that you are here. Ognanateni tolliwa... It's enough that we have conveyed the message that we are happy because of his presence. I am pleased to convey my sincere appreciation to each dedicated member of our parliament for your collective effort and active involvement in the approval of parliament bill number 267. It aims to provide equal and fair representation for the eighty seats within our esteemed parliament. By creating single-member districts, we are taking a bold step towards ensuring that the diverse voices and concerns of our constituents are not only heard but also addressed with precision and fairness. Special appreciation goes to the Committee on Rules whose meticulous work during public consultation has been instrumental in shaping this bill. I commend not only the committee members but also those members of the parliament who are not members of the committee who went above and beyond travelling to every province to hear the voices of our people. From the initial stages of public consultations through the period of interpolations and debates, your commitment to serving the best interests of our constituents has been commendable. I also extend my appreciation to the secretariat, the office of the floor leader and everyone, of course the office of the secretary-general who worked tirelessly to bring this bill to fruition. The collaborative effort demonstrated during the formulation and refinement of this bill showed the parliament's dedication to inclusivity, transparency, and democratic principles. I look forward to the positive impact that this legislation will have on our constituents and the greater prosperity it will bring to our beloved region. Once again, thank you for your hard work, your commitment and dedication to the betterment of the Bangsa Muroh. Wa billa taufik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. The chief minister has the floor. He wants to see... He was to your colleagues in the parliament. Chief Minister, I have the floor.
Okay. Billa wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Before I officially pronounce the result of the nominal voting, I'd like to express my gratitude to each and every one of you for working very hard in order to achieve it on this bill, the parliamentary act providing for the creation of parliamentary districts in the Bangsa Muroh Autonomous Region in Muslim Indana. Thank you very much for working hard and working on time before the senior day you were able to pass this very important bill. And we are, as you know, we are almost complete in the priority bills we need to pass during the parliamentary... during the... during the... the... our terms of the BTA. So, we are very happy that with your... with your support, with your... with your efforts, kind efforts in order to work together in order to achieve what we have... the tasks that is expected of us, we are able to comply. Alhamdulillah. So, thank you very much for everyone. Thank you very much and please continue working together, insya Allah. Now, I would like to officially announce the result of the nominal voting on the BTA Parliament Bill number 267 entitled "An Act Providing for the Creation of Parliamentary Districts in the Bangsa Muroh Autonomous Region in Muslim Indana". This is the result as counted. Forty-seven voted yes, one voted no, and three abstention. Therefore, the bill is now officially approved by this vote. Thank you very much. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
We will now proceed to the ceremonial signing and after that we will ask the members of parliament to join us in photo opportunity.
Prince, prince.
Eh, wag nati ito kayo.
Na na kami sa gitna.
Ah? Atapasalit.
Pristo na kayo. Unaka pristo na o.
Sabado pwede.
Dispre natin ito?
Opo. Napalakpak kita.
Bakalakpak kami.
Opo, palakpak kayo. Bakalakpak.
Paano na 'yung pag-aano? Paralinin. Paralinin. Rollin' ya. Dito kayo, dito kayo. Okay. Patensyalakay, palita kano natin.
Di pa tayo nakalipat sa parang.
Okay. Idali, kayo pa.
Pagiring... Masiran. Pagiring maambusi. Paano niya?
Yung... Yung...
Ladya pa niya dila. Yani pagiringan di first ladya pa niya dila dila ng puta kuya niya. Yung anak mo na marunaw, bakit nagadila-dila pa? Ni mali.
Siguro may sakit at 'yung salong ko. Dispre niya.
Yung yuringan.
This is... Other milestone.
Haluje boyler. Amrela.
Comrades, boss. Another milestone for the speaker.
Okay, fellow members of the parliament, meron pa bang tayo? Isa? Please do not go home yet. Di pa tayo adjourn, ha?
Suspended pa po ang session. Di pa po nagajoin.
Read on first reading, BTA Bill number 286.
The secretariat is directed to the read the BTA bill for first reading. Mr. Speaker, BTA Parliament Bill number 286 entitled "An Act Providing for the Revenue Code of the Bangsa Muroh Autonomous Region in Muslim Indana", appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes authored by the government of the day. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we adjourn. Anti-
Eh, suspend. Suspend tayo.
Adjourn for... A new OB tomorrow, Mr. Speaker. Adjourn until 9:00 AM tomorrow, Mr. Speaker. 9:00 AM tomorrow.
For... pursuant to the instruction of the floor leader, the... Adjourn dawit. Adjourn.
9:00 AM.
The session is adjourned until 9:00 AM tomorrow. The session is adjourned until 9:00 AM tomorrow. Session is adjourned until 9:00 AM.